Just two weeks out of three or three weeks out of four.
We're doing a trip to China.
Oh, yeah.
September.
Where are you going?
Yeah.
China.
Yeah, where though?
That's a big place.
That's. I've been there a number of times too, so.
It's a Viking cruise, but we fly into Hong Kong, we could go to Shanghai, and we get on the boat, and we could do a bunch of small, smaller coastal towns, and then we get up north and they fly us to Beijing. And then they take us to, what is it, Shenzhen, where all the Terracotta Warriors are? And then they fly us back down to Hong Kong. Now, it's like eighteen days.
Much time you spend in Shanghai?
Well, eighteen days.
In Shanghai?
I don't know. No, I think it's just a day or.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, you know, it's a Viking cruise.
Yeah. Well, we can talk about it. I'll tell you when I can, but. They're neat places. They're neat places.
Yeah, I was telling her, you worked there for a little while, right, with Armstrong?
Yeah, I was, like, for a year and a half, I made nine trips there.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I'd go for like two or three weeks and come back for a week and go for two or three weeks. Jane says I'd go there, get sick, come back and get better, and I'd go back again.
You were on the planning commission then?
Yeah.
That was early in my.
Didn't attend too many.
Yeah, because there was like, yeah, I was telling her, I thought it was like six months for a while, that you weren't around much.
Well, it could have been because of schedule, but I wasn't there for six months. I was never there for, let's say, more than. I think I was never there more than a month at one time. But, like I said.
Yeah, interesting.
Nine trips. Let's see, so.
Should time.
Okay, yeah, should time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March thirteenth meeting of the Easthamfield Township Planning Commission. Please join me in opening the meeting with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first agenda item would be the minutes from our last meeting, which was back in January. Did anybody have, have any corrections, additions? What was submitted?
I didn't have any, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs.
The girl here.
Mrs. Byrne. I thought I said Mr. Never mind. Motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne. That we approve the minutes as submitted for the January tenth meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm gonna abstain since I wasn't here.
One, two, three, four, five, zero, one. All right, first action item is HWGA Realty and Bell Telephone Company. Evening, Steve Gurgley, Harbor Engineering.
Evening.
I don't think your mic's on, Steve.
Oh.
Is it working? Okay. Okay, so yeah, this is a lot add-on plan between two properties. The one to the north, it's eleven seventy Enterprise Court. It's Bell Telephone Company's Verizon. It's one of their offices and shops off the cul-de-sac. And the other property involved is, it doesn't have a, an address, but it's two point six acres, and it's owned by HWGA Realty and one of the Lancaster County Motors owners. They use it for vehicle storage. And for that property, in the past, we submitted a couple of plans that never really got developed or went anywhere. And what the purpose of this plan is, is to transfer about four tenths of an acre from the Verizon or Bell Telephone property to the north, to the property to the south. And just a little bit of background on why we're doing this. The owner is looking to convert that property to the south on Commercial Avenue into a vehicle service center for one of their dealerships. So we're in the early phases of the land planning for that, but dealing with Verizon and everything like that, they're just trying to get, take care of the lot add-on component of it to get them a little more usable land area when we go forward with that plan. So we'll be back in a couple of months probably with a land development plan, but that's the purpose of the lot add-on transfer. And the property, as you can see, it has a little bit of a jog to it to the north there. And the reason is, there's an existing accessory structure at the south end of the Verizon property, and there's a twenty-foot setback requirement for that. So that's why there's a small jog in that. Other than that, there's no improvements proposed with this plan at all. It's just a lot add-on plan at this point. So the plan waivers modifications that we're asking for are plan scale to show one of the sheets at sixty scale, so we can show everything on one sheet. Surveyed features within two hundred feet. The requirement, we're asking for a waiver for the requirement to provide reports, which is a catch-all for everything from stormwater to wetlands, et cetera, based on the fact that we're not proposing any improvements. And deferrals for a curbing sidewalk, road widening for both Enterprise Court and Commercial Avenue. And the last modification is a ten-foot buffer planting strip requirement on the southern edge of the Verizon property. So again, nothing's being proposed with this plan. But, and when the land development plan for the southern property goes through, they'll have to provide a landscape screen and buffer at that time. So we're asking for a reduced buffer, just to give some additional area for the lot add-on to kind of maximize the area. Any questions about any of that? I went through it kind of quickly, but there's not a lot on to this plan.
Couple quick.
Wait, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Couple quick questions I had. Lot coverage, I saw on your cover sheet, it said a plus or minus dimension, or plus or minus percentage. Obviously, with the removal of some lot area on the northern property, your lot coverage increases, and their availability to have future impervious proposed decreases. That plus or minus is, you feel pretty confident that the plan shows all the impervious.
I do, Jeff. We could actually even take the plus or minus off. Sometimes we just put that on. But it, we had the, so we didn't have topography surveyed, but we had all the site features picked up, particularly for, well, we already had the survey for the southern property from previous work. But the Verizon property, we had the edge of pavement and building survey for that reason, because we wanted to make sure as part of this application that we weren't, you know, going to create a zoning issue for that. So they have a little bit of fluff with that, but. Oh, that's a good point. I'll take the plus or minus off, because we have it down to the square foot on the plan.
The second question I had, related to the the waiver request for the landscape buffer, your waiver request was to waive the buffer, correct me if I'm wrong? And then the recommendation was to.
Yeah, kind of semantics. We had offered a ten-foot buffer, so I think Scott's letter was like, well, it's more of a modification than a waiver, and that makes sense.
And which property line is that along?
The northern. Right here. So it'll be a ten-foot. There's a fence at the back of the property here, so we're basically taking the lot line ten feet from where the fence is located.
So which property provides this buffer?
Well, they'll both, so if the Verizon property were ever to be developed, which is unlikely, because it's already developed, and they went through a subdivision land development process, they would be required to install a landscape screening buffer. So it's unlikely that they would do that, but we're just asking for a reduced width for that area. And then when we do the land development plan for this property, we'll have to provide either, it's either a twenty or thirty-foot landscape buffer along this property line. So when this gets, goes through land development, this will have the substantial landscape buffer required by your ordinance. So it's almost kind of superfluous anyway to have like two landscape buffers.
Yeah, I know there's discussions going on about.
And they're the similar uses.
While we're talking about that area, what's the, are there any issues with those dumpsters or whatever and the fence inside the thirty-five-foot setback? Are they permitted?
Accessory, are you referring to these, these structures here?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are like small outbuilding sheds. There's a specific setback for accessory structures, which is twenty feet.
So that, they don't comply there either?
They do comply with that. They make a twenty-foot requirement. So the ten-foot is the landscape buffer, that is a twenty-foot setback.
You said twenty-foot was the setback for accessories?
For the structures themselves, yeah. And then the landscape buffer is different.
But I, looking at that drawing, it looks like the back of those structures are probably eleven feet.
It's twenty, it's twenty feet. I don't know if you can, are you able to zoom in, Nate, is that possible?
Trying to get it to go right now.
Size plan, I have eleven by seventeen, but it's labeled in.
Because it says ten feet to the fence, and those things are sitting almost at the fence.
Right, and that's why we jog the property line.
Oh, I don't. I don't see that, Ken. We don't.
Yeah, they pointed that out. So we initially had this coming straight through, and they said, hey, you've got a zoning issue. We didn't.
That's what we're seeing.
So, yeah, it's ten feet from the fence, except for twenty feet for.
Okay.
Here.
Yeah, the accessories just can't be moved instead of putting a crazy lot line in like that?
Our client, you know, with the service center and vehicle stores, they want every square foot that they could possibly get, so. They'll be retaining walls and everything else. You'll see in a couple of months when we bring it in, but, yeah, that's, that's what they prefer.
But they could give up ten feet and just have a straight line across there.
They could, yeah, and we talked that.
Or eight feet or something. It's more than ten feet now. It's like maybe twelve feet. So they have to move it eight feet.
Yeah, that's what they would prefer. It's a little bit weird, but it does meet the ordinance.
Yeah. Makes more sense just to have a consistent line going across.
Yeah, I agree.
Because what about in the future if those sheds get moved?
Something. Are they sheds or are they permanent structure? I think they're considered accessory structures, so they're like sheds for.
Probably pick them up with a forklift and move.
I don't.
I don't think we, I don't think we can dictate where that property line goes. I mean, if it meets the ordinance, it meets the ordinance.
I guess you're right.
I guess the one thing that the ordinance may say, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, maybe you can clarify, that the lot line generally is supposed to be perpendicular to the to the road.
That probably isn't the ordinance, although in this case.
This is. Yep.
Yeah, it hardly matters, because there's no reference, but like this will actually square the lot line with being parallel with the buildings. Currently, it's at an angle, but again.
Except for that cutout there.
Yeah, if you took it, if they took it from the lower point on the right side of the triangle there, straight across, you'd, you'd have it covered.
Little bit less usable area. And then again, they're going to have to put in their own landscape buffer when they do their project, so. It's an unusual property, but they want, they want every square foot that they can get. And they're going through this process with Verizon, which is kind of a cumbersome process. It takes a while to get answers. It's like a corporate deal. So asking them to, for example, move the sheds and things like that is pretty much a non-starter. So it's like, if you want this, you can, you can work around it, so.
So who wants this? Bell Telephone?
No, HWGA Realty, which is, it's.
They want that space.
Lancaster County Motors. Yeah, they want this land.
And they couldn't give up?
They could.
Three or four feet, three or four feet on those two notches? Are they going to get straight across?
They could. They would prefer not to. I think it's one of those things when it's done and is built, no one's going to notice, and there's going to be a landscape buffer back there anyway.
And nobody will remember the property line goes by jog.
Right.
Well, I mean, it's going to be recorded, so.
It'll be recorded. Things will be said.
Until they do something else on the property and discover that their setback is four foot in, part of that.
Yeah.
We could.
We'll just have to remind them on that.
Plan request, recommend denial, just don't get that straight. It's important.
Based on what, though?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see what we would base that upon.
Common sense.
Unfortunately, the municipality's planning code does not say anything about common sense, so.
Defined in the. All those definitions at the beginning.
The landscape buffer even jogs on this property.
When I look at that, the jog of the landscape buffer doesn't look to line up with the lot line. I don't know if it's just my eyes, but. It look.
No.
Yeah, where jogs looks like a different location than where the lot line jogs.
Yeah. Oh, and like upper property, you're right.
Well, so at its narrowest point, like it would be. There'd be more than that here. There'd be twenty feet available.
Yeah.
South side of the accessory strip.
So the fence goes the whole way across there, and that's straight?
No, it says it's straight. It says it's ten feet on both corners.
Yeah.
And that will remain on Verizon's.
Yes.
Property, that fence, all of it.
Yeah, it's one of those things too, I think for maintenance and everything like that, I think we, our client and Verizon were probably both a little bit surprised to realize that Verizon's property line was actually here to begin with, because, you know, they, this is all lawn. I think it's been maintained historically by, by this owner.
Yeah, they've probably just been maintaining.
One of the things, like they go to the fence, they thought that was the property line. That's really not the case at all, we found out, so.
The fence will stay the way it is. It won't jog.
Yeah, no.
Based on the property line.
Physical changes whatsoever. Nothing on the Verizon property at all.
Reminds me of years and years ago when farms, prior to having running water, they would have, like a stream might come close to a farm. They would have, like, my farm has a little jog into the neighbor's property, so they could access the stream. Has the municipality ever looked at, you know, granting variance from accessory structure setback so that something like this doesn't have, have to happen? Because that's really what's forcing a funky lot line, just the fact that two existing structures are there.
It would take the desire of Verizon to pursue that.
Variance, okay. They're not going.
Our experience with your zoning hearing board is that they would not look at that as a, they would look at that as a self-imposed hardship, and it's guaranteed they would deny it. Yeah.
So, based on the order of things, we should do the denial of a modification first, and then the approval.
I was just looking at them here.
Should be denial, waiver.
All in one motion?
The number five?
Yeah.
It's denial, waiver, five.
Weird.
It could just be three.
And then approval of the modification.
Deny it?
Done it similar to how I've written before.
Okay, where we deny it and.
And instead approve a modification.
Right, okay. Do we have to do that in two steps? I guess I'm trying to.
I don't know, I, I mulled over how I was writing that for a while, and that was the closest to a previous example I could find.
We got one, two, and six are just flat out to be granted, right?
One, two, three.
Three. Three and.
I'm just labeled as number, it should be number six for the second. Believe it's. You're counting the.
I counted one, two, and six. Can you, you didn't show us granted. It's a letter. Three and four.
But is the letter we have in our packet the most recent packet, or is what you wrote out here the most recent waiver modification request?
Could have the most recent in your packet.
Because the plan's not in the packet. The plan still shows a line going straight across without the jog.
So it might have been an error on my part.
What's the most current review letter date from DMA?
February twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's the one we have, six granted straight out. We have this one, February twenty-sixth.
Yeah, February twenty-sixth.
Our revision was February nineteen.
You're right, one, two, and.
Approval.
One, two, and six. One, two, six.
Four. Are conditional. Four and five are conditional.
Two and three are conditional.
No, three and four.
Three and four are conditional.
Three and four are conditional, yeah.
And five is the. It's the funky one. Want me to take a stab at it?
Before you start, so on number five, we're going to deny it. Are they going to submit another request for modification then? Make it ten feet?
Say that again?
Number five, they're requesting a variance, oh. A waiver of the whole thing, right? And we're saying no. We won't waive the whole thing.
I think it's a wording thing, because we had asked for the same thing there, that DMA is recommending approval for. So we asked for, we called it a waiver to ask for a reduced buffer width to ten feet.
Yeah.
I think semantically, they're saying it's not.
Not a waiver.
Not a waiver. Your modification, so that the request is the same.
We're approving a modification.
So number five will be a modification to a ten-foot buffer. One, two, and six.
Okay, Dwayne, you thinking on it?
I'm not sure on five yet.
Yeah.
I'll take a stab at it. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications one, two, and six, and conditional approval of modifications three and four, and approval of a modification to decrease the buffer requirement to ten feet related to modification five.
Subject.
Subject to staff and engineer comments.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Datter, that we recommend approval of modifications one, two, and six, conditional approval of modifications three and four, and approval of modified condition number five to allow for a ten-foot buffer zone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous, six, zero. And we have the lot add-on plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation to approve the lot add-on plan prepared or called HWGA Realty and Bell Telephone Company.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bully, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the lot add-on plan for HWGA Realty and Bell Telephone Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye. And I would just ask. No, that was, I'm in favor.
Okay, so six, zero.
I would just ask to make sure the minutes reflect our concern with the lot line. So the supervisors can.
Pushback.
Yeah. We'll let them fight that battle, but.
Okay, next item is eleven eighty-five Enterprise Captivair. Sketch plan with a waiver of the preliminary plan. Yeah, thanks. So eleven eighty-five Enterprise Road is three point two acres, and this has Captivair's office. It's a, what is this? A research and development facility. So they have offices and work areas where they, they do research and development. They do like, like venting hoods for like commercial kitchen products is their business, and rooftop units and things like that. And this prop, this project was prepared by a group called Stocks Engineering. They are out of Nashville, North Carolina. And what they do is Captivair is nationwide. They have facilities all over the, all over the country. And so they basically follow them around. And what they try to do, where practical, is partner with local civil engineering firms to kind of help guide them through the local process, which is, I think saves everybody a lot of time. So this is the first time we've done anything quite like this. They've been very, very good to work with. They've done all the work. I've sort of helped them kind of navigate the process, and we'll continue to do that through the land development process, just kind of sharing, sharing things and kind of facilitating meetings. So I'm presenting this on behalf of Stocks Engineering. But the plan is to expand the building at the northeast portion. It's about a five thousand square foot office addition. And also expand the parking to the property to accommodate the additional employees. So the plan itself is relatively straightforward. We have shown conceptually for the sketch plan, the landscape buffers that are required along the northern portion of the property and along the southern portion of the property, where there is no buffer where the parking lots be expanded. Begun to work out some of the stormwater facilities, which will be reflected on the land development plan. It'll be an underground stone filtration bed, partially under the parking lot and partially in the lawn area between the parking lot and Enterprise Road. So pretty straightforward plan at this point, just asking for a waiver of preliminary plan. It's all in one phase. And it's, it's, yeah, relatively straightforward. No new access drives are being proposed. And I just want to share with you, Nate, do you mind pulling up some of the architectural renderings? They, they they also take a lot of interest. They've asked us to do above and beyond additional landscaping, which we're working with them on, and they have a real, I guess, a real sense of pride in the, in the building and aesthetics. So that's, that's the facade of the building. There'll be some renovations to the front there. And then if you can go to the other one, I want to show you what the office expansion will look like. But they're, they're very, they have a high interest in making this like a high, high-quality facility for their employees and guests at the facility. So just, just wanted to pass these on, just to share with you what the buildings will look like. It's not really related to the approvals, but did want to pass that along. And of course, while the landscape buffer along the property line in that area as well.
We'll probably get to see that picture in the back. The employees won't be able to.
Look at the label, you said.
Yeah.
Couple quick things I just wanted to. First and foremost, it feels like a plan that should be recommended for final, or a waiver of preliminary plan approval, so you can move right into final. But when looking at the sketch, I always like to offer people things I see. Just that way, when it gets to final plan, we don't, when you get, zoom in on the landscape buffer, there's quite a few things running through the landscape buffer that can't go through a landscape buffer.
Right.
Some utilities, some different things that you might be pinched a little tight there, something you might want to look at.
DMA had a memo of advisory comments in that. That was exactly one of them too, so. That is noted, yeah, thank you. We'll make sure that we. Are there any questions? Okay, then all we need to do is take, make a recommendation on the waiver for preliminary plan of plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of the preliminary plan waiver request for eleven eighty-five Enterprise Captivair project. Subject to staff and engineer comments.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Caldas, that we recommend approval of the waiver of preliminary plan for eleven eighty-five Enterprise Captivair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That would be unanimous. Thanks very much. Have a good night. Now that Stacy's here, we can adjourn.
Steve, can you go over all of that again?
I was gonna stay home, and then I was like, what if there, what if there wasn't a quorum, and they actually need a vote?
Thanks.
Knowing full well that never happens, so it's okay.
Okay, I don't think there's anything under old business unless somebody has questions on something we've talked about before. Were there any questions on the March project update?
Not other than I, you know, we were talking beforehand, the lawsuit on the Cobro. Not other than I, you know, we were talking beforehand, the lawsuit on the Colebrook. Associates project.
So that's like, is that a special meeting for zoning?
Twenty-first.
That's an extra one, or after meeting. Is that? Is that a zoning hearing? It's treated as a zoning hearing meeting?
Yes.
All right, there's no other questions or business. Meeting is adjourned. Seven twenty-nine.